Welcome everybody that is on board of the show, February 15th, 2018. My name is Mike Yatkins. I'm the chairman. On my left, you are right vice chair, Mr. Cabas. Four members, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Chin, Mr. Himmel. Four member, Mr. Frank on the back, the head of the special services. Jay Duka. To my right, you are left, the court, Ms. Murphy. Get a cellphone or a pager, could you please put on silent and vibrate not to interrupt the meeting? If anyone wants to talk, please step outside. Loud enough to hear up here when we're talking about projects. If anyone's going to testify, please stand up and raise your right hand. If you think you might even speak tonight, please raise your right hand and stand up. If you don't, you won't speak.
You swear to the truth, the truth, the truth, I hope you God?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a motion for January 23rd?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes from January 23rd.
Second. On a motion, CNN all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Some more. Under all business. Case number 16086, I have a letter here for April 10th.
This is Chairman, man, number 16 dash 086, C Street Quincy LLC, Ron Galligan, manager for a variance finding to amend the decision previously issued in ZBA case number 4302 and case number 08 dash 015, which required a lots of common ownership on premises number 1269 C Street. Make a motion to continue the hearing until April 10th.
Second. On a motion, CNN all in favor?
Aye.
Close. On all business, case number Z17119, Michael Graham for a special permit variance flood plain, demolishing existing structure, construct a three unit residential building, 713 C Street, the applicant representative here.
President.
Name and address for the record?
Good evening, my name is Tom Cavanagh, returning here at Quincy, in office of 15 Foster Street.
Yes, of course.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Tom Cavanagh, as I introduce Michael Graham, the applicant here tonight. Also here tonight is Claudio Sala, the engineer, who is of DeSalleberg in Quincy here. Mr. Graham is before you tonight to request certain variances, well as a special permit, as the property lies in a floodplain Old Bailey District. The property is at 173, 713 C Street. It is approximately 7,327 square feet of land. Currently on the premises, it's improved by a bungalow style house. It's a single family. It is currently that area's own residence B. As your where residence B allows for multifamily residencies, what Mr. Graham is proposing to you tonight is certain variances to allow him to raise that existing structure and then construct a, one, one building comprised of three townhouse style condominiums. The three units, there'd be two end units, those units would be two bedrooms, two and a half baths, the middle unit would be three bedroom, two and a half baths. Each condominium would be served by a garage, on grade, with two parking spots. In addition, he's proposing three additional parking spots on the premises. As proposed to you, the project does comply with lot size, frontage width, side left setback, green areas, well as some of the park. He does request variances for the height of the building. Currently, the code reads that it could be 35 feet of three stories. As proposed, it's, the building is 35 feet, but it is three and a half stories. So we're requesting a variance as it relates to that. In addition, as it relates to the FAR, currently it's approximately .2, but based on the size of the property a lot, and trying to center this on the lot, and the FAR being .4, looking to increase that to .6. So it's not a huge deviation. We feel that based on the size of the property of the lot, that this is, this is appropriate. In addition, the lot area for a dwelling unit, currently the regulation requires 3,000 square feet. As proposed, the project is 2,414 square feet. As it relates to the setbacks, currently the front setback is pre-existing non-conforming, however, Mr. Graham is seeking to improve that pre-existing non-conforming by moving the property back approximately four feet. The side right would comply, however, I believe the side left would require variance, as well as the rear of the lot, which is also pre-existing non-conforming. We don't believe any of the requests is detrimental to the area. The proposed project, I would suggest that it's in the spirit of the zoning, it's a low density, multifamily residence, which is what residence B essentially calls for. In addition, as it relates to parking, currently the ordinance, I believe, requires that it be 24-foot aisle. The majority of the project is actually 29-foot aisle, however, there's a small portion because of the pump out down this area of the building, which it encroaches to about 23.3. This is essentially also, as it relates to the visitor parking, that he's trying to put on the lot to curtail any sort of off-street parking on C Street, which we do, we do not want.
The visitor's no room.
Correct. That is, I would call an extreme safety hazard. So proposing some onsite parking here for visitors that come and visit. But with that, the parking aisle is about .7 feet of. In addition, there is a parking setback that we're requesting here, approximately 1.3 feet from the lot line. That's actually a paper street. There's no butted person there. Again, that's really to allow for parking on the parcel. Lastly, as you would imagine, in that area of C Street, we are in a flood zone, so he is requesting a special permit based on the floodplain Old Bailey District. We don't feel that by constructing this building, it'll, in any way has the neighboring, neighbors' community as a whole. In speaking with the engineer, this project's not going to create any more water. It's all going to be FEMA compliant to allow the floodwaters to come in and come out. There's also engineering proposed that will be able to handle the rainstorms and discharge the water appropriately. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anything now, anyone?
No, just got it.
The water, is he going to go over in your water?
Yes.
As Mr. Sala.
Claudio Sala with DeSalleberg, Sala Associates, 1266 Fernsburg Parkway, Quincy. Basically, for the drainage system, which is one of the issues here, we're proposing an underground infiltration system, which consists of four high-density chambers. They are under the parking area, right here. Parking area itself and the driveway all pitch in towards the lot, not, not in sheds, away from the lot. So they'll all be cut, catch basin in the middle, through a manhole, and then into the infiltration system. The roof, the roof leers also will be piped into the infiltration system. And basically, right now, everything on the lot sheds away from the parcel, sheds out, everything will be contained inside. So the net effect runoff from the site will actually decrease. And I had part of that report covered for you to work tonight. Decrease of all storms for two-year, the 10-year, the 25 and, and 100-year storm, although 100-year storm may be two feet of water.
So I give him two weeks. It'd be two weeks, 100-year storm.
Well, there'd be, there'd be two feet of water on the parcel. Pretty much infiltration system dealing with special permit floodplain. I, I don't have a foundation design, but FEMA requires the, the minimum openings, they will be in the foundation. The lower floor will be garage area for storage, so no utilities will be, will be in that lower area.
And how big are those chambers?
Chambers are the 150s, so they're 11 feet long, like four feet wide.
They're 150s?
They're 150s, yeah. And I think they're 18 inches deep. So infiltration area would be 24 by, whatever that is. You didn't mention it.
Right.
Any other questions?
I don't right now. Anyone else?
No.
You can have a seat. Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in favor? First call? Second call? Counselor?
Dave McCarty, 48th Road, Ward One Counselor. Just to recap, Mr. Cavanagh, I have to say, we met with really the only butters on that side of the property, Joe and Eileen Chase, who had concerns that they've had water issues over the years. Mr. Graham, Mr. Cavanagh, and Mr. Burke were all there, along with the Chases. We went over everything. I think it's a nice addition that they're putting in, not too large, it doesn't absorb or turn into a monstrous development-type project on C Street. And Eileen Chase kept us all straight, that night if you know her.
Oh, yeah.
And so I think it's good, good for C Street and a good project.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wants to speak in favor, last call? All the party hearing closed. I have nothing for correspondence with DPW. Is there anyone opposing on the side? First call? Second call? Third call? Close. It is a nice project, I think we, we put this on a little while so the counselor could have his meeting. He had his meeting, and everything that we've asked, what we've done, so I'll be going in favor.
I'll be going in favor too, Mr. Chairman. Go ahead, Mr. Chairman, in favor.
As well.
Thanks, Chairman. Do you have a motion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, add another, Z17 dash 119, Michael Graham for a special permit varying, variance floodplain, demolishing existing structure, construct a new three-unit residential structure on premises number 713 C Street. Make a motion to grant the relief.
Second. On a motion, CNN all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Some more. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Thank you. On the new business, case number Z181, Simon Lamb for variance to vary a two-family or three-family home on 172 Vassal. The applicant representative here.
Yes.
Name and address for the record?
Simon Lamb, from Quincy.
Address?
18 Washington Road.
Okay.
And the cell contact, this is the owner.
My name is Ray Tomten, my address, 172, Verso Street, Quincy.
Why are you here? Why don't you tell us what you want to do?
I'd like to convert his two-family unit to a three-family.
Yeah. Continue. Why?
Well, Mrs. Shaw bought his residence two years ago, and he thought, he bought a three-family. Then when, two years later, when he went for refinancing, the bank found out that his house was a two-family residence, a three-family. So he contacted me, and I went to his house, and there was three gas meters and three electrical meters. And so I went to the building department to see what the problem was. From what I found from the apartment was, they had a violation, that the previous owner before, Mrs. Jan, converted to a three-family, and he didn't do it illegally, and he sold his house, and Mrs. Jan bought it without knowing. Now, so after the refinance, so we're gonna, we came, talked to a building inspector, he said the best way is to go rezoning, try to convert to a legal three.
There's a lot of things, I think, you know, when you bought that, you saw the taxes, right? Saw the taxes for a two-family home. You got the tax bill? Says two-family, right on your bill?
Yeah, but on the public record, on, on, it says it's three-family.
Or what? He paying taxes now for three-family?
I, I saw his tax bill, though.
Any questions?
No.
It certainly isn't refinancing. It looks like it's been refinancing for a while.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Any question? Is there any work required to?
Yes, the plan we are proposing, we have to enlarge the where east, the where east to, to bigger, it's, it's kind of steep right now, so we are planning to make it bigger out to cold.
From the first floor, is that?
From the third floor east.
Third floor east, that would be widely open.
Yes, so we're gonna take the pantry out, the second floor, to accommodate the changes.
Great, thank you. That was my question.
Can I have my input?
Thank you.
All right. We can have people speak on it, if they, is there anyone here for this case to speak on it? Okay, then we'll, we'll go through it. I know what I, I'd like to do, if it's okay to the board, to do a little more homework that I just started to burn it. I didn't know you bought it as a three, and you thought it was a three, but I'd like to go down in the building department and see what those violations were. They were there, and they knew, someone should have known that when he bought it. So if he bought a two, three-family, that he knew it was really a two-family, you know, that's his fault, but if it's someone else's fault, maybe we should find out a little more.
Yeah, and.
All right, let's go through, if people are here, let's, let's hear the case of reason and the case of truth. Thank you, you can have a seat. Is there anyone here want to speak in favor? First call? Second call? Third call? Close. I have a letter here from the DPW. Mr. Cabas?
Yes, we reviewed the stability above record project, and our comments are as followed. One, specify how much of the purpose area will be increased due to the, the developments. Two, provide plans showing the existing site conditions and layout of utility. Three, explain how the surface runoff will be discharged and treated. Four, on completion of the project, as-built plans showing utilities, building footprints, reference bounds and benchmarks, defining the total site facilities and right-of-ways need to be submitted along additional files. The as-built plan should be stamped and signed by a professional land surveyor or professional engineer.
Thank you. All the party hearing closed. Is there anyone opposing on the side? Step forward, state your name and address for the record. If anyone else wants to speak, come up now, we can stand in line.
Name's Jim Donovan, 55 Channing Street, Quincy. I live directly behind the property in question. I really don't have a problem with what has happened, because I guess, it appears to be a three-family, people have been living there, they know they paid for it out in the backyard. One question I have, there's some type of a structure that's been built last summer, that kind of abuts my fence and leaves on it, so sticks, some type of a garden with wood all over it, and, and this is the first time, I've been living there since '81, we have a rat problem. So I don't know what this structure is, a garden, or something that is attracting rats. The city is down with ladybugs laying traps, trying to take care of this, so I'd like to just find out what that structure is, what the purpose is, and at least if I can move it from my fence.
And how you feel about converting that from a two-family to a three, because right now it is a two-family structure?
I understand that, and that's, it's a big house, it really doesn't, that doesn't affect.
And it affects the parking and nothing?
No, no, I'm directly back, it, it doesn't appear, I mean, like they said, it always appeared, I thought it was a three-family for a while. That structure is new, and it's the first time since '81, I've never had a rat, and I've got traps out in the back, that have caught a few, the neighbors have caught about 30 between them. So I don't know if this is adding to it, we've never had that before.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
What is this structure in the back there with the sticks? Why is it leaning on the fence?
Yeah, he has a vegetable garden in the back.
All right. And it's right against his fence?
It's on the fence, back on the back, yes.
That's his fence, no?
Yes, my fence.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's his fence, right? Not your fence.
He says it's like eight inches away from the fence.
All right, whatever's grown on it, it's grown all over his fence, make sure it's off his fence way before you come back.
No problem.
Thanks. One more. Is there anyone else? Oh, let me ask him when he bought the property. Yeah. It was two years ago, he said.
Yeah, two years ago.
Yeah.
Two years ago? Yes.
Anything else, anyone? Question? Is there anyone else opposing on the side? Second call? Third call? All the party hearing closed. Do you have a motion for two weeks? How would you get the?
3734, June 13th.
Okay, so anything else? 13th of March.
Mr. Chairman, man, number Z18 dash 1, Simon Lamb for a variance to convert the two-family house to a three-family home on premises number 172 Vassal Street. Make a motion to continue the hearing until March 13th.
Second. On a motion, CNN all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Next, 13th. Rather under tonight's agenda, case number Z17 dash 2, Mr. and Mrs. Joseph Bonney for variance to renovate the attic and add two shed dormers with decks in the premises number 10 with, which the applicant representative here.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Jeffrey Graver, Graver, makes the camp of 15, party chapter, Quincy, and Mrs. Joseph and Catherine, the owners. They're, they're under special permit because they have a non-conforming house, and they're also extending the attic to put additional living spaces. The additional living space would be two dormers along the same roof line, tend to be a bedroom, still a two-family, but it'll just give this growing family some additional space. The Bonneys actually lived in this property, the Bonney family, since 1900. So there are several generations, and now the, Joe, his wife, moved back 2011, and now they bought in 2017, and they're making these renovations. It needs some renovations to the roof, to the side, to, you know, significantly improve a 100-year-old house, and because it's non-conforming, it leaves a special permit. And so at the same time they were doing the roof, they wanted to expand, when it are now just an attic space into living space. And their architect, Hal March, is here with some of the sketches, in case if there are any questions about it. It's, the proposed renovations will not change the dimensions, it won't even change the height, as far as the roof line, but it'll extend it along from just an attic in one part to a full dorm with use. So it's, it's not a change in use, and so it's primarily a findings case for renovations to existing non-conforming. But however, since the attic space will now be considered an additional story, it's, it's also a variance case. So it's the non-conforming relief, the non-conform, its use is staying the same, it's a two-family and a single-family resident zone, but it's, it's not changing its use. And as to dimensions, it's non-conforming in dimensional, as far as setbacks, the 100-year-old house there, but there'll be no changes to that. And as, so conform with the form, the findings standard, to make sure that it's not a, extending the non-conformities, and it's in conformity with the neighborhood. They did circulate a letter to their butters and the neighbors, and they got several statements of support. I have one for the, they summarized them for the chairman, and I have a copy here, so. I'll just read some of these. I believe Counselor Harris has indicated his support to, to the board and the mayor's office. The first is from, they got an email from their neighbor at 26 Wedgwood, Dee McGlaughlin, who said, she used to rent, actually rent the first floor in the 1980s from her father, which was, note that she was paying $350 a month, and she has fond memories, it's a great old home, and the renovations will bring back the old girl of 10, Wedgwood, back with the charming house it's been. A voicemail from their neighbor, Donna Pound, at 11 Wedgwood, who said wanted to congratulate on their upcoming baby, expands on the family, and had no problems with the roommate. And the last was a card from Catherine Don Golden at 110 Bellevue Road, saying that they're happy to learn that they bought the house from their family, that four generations here for 53 years, and they were wishing them good luck. Recently, I think last night, they got a voicemail from one of the neighbors who might be here who have some concerns about the sight lines on the roof, and the architect suggested that. But other than that, it's in conformity, as I said, this is basically the same house that's been for 100 years. Notice the height, technically, the building department considers this a three-story, because it's only two and a half with the attic, but the basement is a full-height basement, so it's considered a three-story, so it's in conformity. But they're not going to use that, enable to agree to any kind of restriction on any zoning relief, that there would never be any living space in the basement. So that was, even considering this, it'll just be back to a three-story. It'd just rather not, consider this a story, the story would be up along the improved And I note that section 3.45 does allow a little more dayway with the board to extensions of dimensions on single and two-family homes, so it can really be done with the ZBA findings style standard. But I think they conform with the neighborhood, there, there is no other room for expansion, as everyone knows, they're one, they're so close to their neighbors, so the only way they can make improved living space, other than to build in the basement, is to extend the roof. Mr. March, is he here to answer any other questions? You can see from the, that's the existing house with the attic, and that will be extended dorm. Okay. Mr. March?
This is the geographic, as you see the, well, maybe you don't feel it, the south side next to Bellevue is up at 90 feet above sea level. It's one and a half stories, really, on this side. As you go towards the ocean, towards, towards the bay, it drops off to 78 above sea level, so it's a very steep site. And the basement on the north side is actually exposed, but it's only a six-foot-seven interior structure, so it can't be used as living space in the end. And, so the proposal is to, to basically take the roof of the second floor in this section, which at the moment has, has windows at five feet off the floor on the interior, the eve, it's five feet, you can't walk up to the, to the window without hitting your head. So the new proposal is simply to raise that eve three feet, to make it an eight-foot ceiling inside, normal ceiling. And then add the attic above that, that's the same height as the existing ridge today. That would also allow for a dormer to come off the south side, facing the water, and, and the deck up there, and then they also wanted another dormer on the existing ridge to come out here to face the city. And that ends up being 50% of that top floor livable space, which, in the way I understand the code, a half a floor is 50% of the livable space under roof. So that's basically it. And it does make the north side a little bit taller, again, without the basement being used at all, existing nor in the future because of its low height, that is really the only way to help improve the structure. There's also a lot of structural damage. The second floor curves, not under, but over, we don't know how that happened. There's leaks in the ceiling, there's leaks in this roof, skylights, as it's, it was built in the 30s, that, that part of the house, this was built in the 20s, I believe. And so it, it needs a lot of help, both interior and exterior. And the, the new owners have been living there how many years? Five years?
Five years, yep.
Five years renting and then being owned.
On the driveway, everyone uses? Can anyone want to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call, closed. I've got a letter here from the D P W, we review the public project and have no comments. Anyone opposed or run the side? Let's step forward, say your name and address for a record, please.
Ms. Gina Liskowski, currently at twenty-eight Leeson Street. But I own part of the house that's right next door, ninety-eight Bellevue Road. And I, I spoke with Joe last night, who's playing telephone cat. And I was, from out of our, what I'm concerned about, from out of our master bedroom in the back, we're very close, the two houses are very close, the grandfathered in. It, it, I'm afraid that this will block part of our, our view to the, to the bay and the islands. As already mentioned, they have a sweeping view with no, almost no obstruction to the, to Quincy Bay. And as I understand it, they're hoping to get a view of Boston. So I'm, I'm here to look at the, at the plans. And I just don't want to have the little view that we have of the ocean be blocked. And we're very close. I'm not sure if you're the ones that, our, our driveway is, is very close. And I'm happy that they're going to fix up the house and I wish them, while I'm just concerned about the, the dormer building, the dormer, I think.
So it's going to go in the east view, east view?
Going towards Boston.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not east. Not really, not. It could be a knock, east view is the ocean, yeah, so it would be a knock.
Yeah.
That comes out.
And I, I wasn't able to fully understand, and Joe wasn't able to describe it to me that, but I'm still, that's, I'm making a concern.
But if you see, if you see, if you see the two buildings, you see the top floor there, the left and the right?
So this is, this is, this is.
That's what's there now.
That's existing though.
So what we're doing, you're looking at that little piece on the top, is that small little, little piece, on some side of this, just right there.
Yeah, this piece right here.
Yeah.
But it, it, right.
That's the piece that's bothering, that little foot.
And this would be, I didn't realize that this would be extended here, that there's going to be, is, is that a deck off of?
Six.
Here.
Off of.
That should be there. That third deck is there, I think.
Yeah, so that, that would, that would even impact us, impact us more.
It's existing.
It's there.
It's existing.
Well, this is existing.
Right.
But I don't.
Yeah, it's only existing. Look, look, I'm going to go.
No, this is existing here, right now. This is the existing, right? So then.
Oh, you're talking about the roof.
This is the roof line.
That's actually, all right, that's, that's a railing.
Oh, okay.
So it'll be a glass railing, yeah.
Oh, a glass railing. Oh, okay. That's good, that's good.
I didn't, I didn't.
But still, it would be, so this is the whole part that is existing.
Right, right now, there is a roof there that is, you see, that's going to be demolished. And they're going to put a railing there.
Flat.
Basically, yeah, flat.
Oh, we're talking about that piece on the top.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Now, this, this space is east.
I understood that that piece is Boston, yeah.
Yeah, right. But it should be looking north.
This is the, yeah, this is your house here. And this will be looking this way, towards Boston.
Right.
So you're talking about looking this way now, that's.
This, I'm talking looking straight, straight out, straight out there, and it.
So that's towards the water.
Towards the water. And we don't have, because of the, we don't have a lot of ocean view because they're so close. And so that, it just, it, it blocks the island and the ocean.
This is your house right there. And it's, it's one and a half stories? You have a second floor?
Yes.
You did. And your bedroom's on the second floor. That's what you're talking about. And so a small, the one over on this roof edge right there is what you're talking about.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else, Ms.? Anything else? Thanks, Ms. Liskowski. Anyone else? Oppose or run the side? Second call, third call, all are filed here and closed. Mine stinks when you don't provide a view, but, you know. I lost the key card the first day. And I sat here and gave away my view because it's only there. Those people talk those parts of the property and they're going to write to fix their property. And I feel the same words today. And they're going to write to fix their property. I'm going to vote in favor. Let's give me one second. So that's it. It's this piece here, you put it, no, that's the glass, that's the glass one. It's this little corner piece. And I understand what you're saying, but you know what? If you're by on the water, that's the way you want. That's the way I, I fought in the middle. And I get beat more than once. Yep.
I hope my, my other members give me their opinion. I'm, I'm a little torn right now.
Mr. Bryan, comments?
Is that, is that portion, how, how wide is that portion that's going?
Which portion?
The, the piece that she's concerned about.
Well, let's see. If this is twelve.
This is the corner of the roof.
Twelve feet, is that true? This is mentioned.
Yes.
It's twelve feet out. And eight feet tall.
That should go in there. That should go in there. Huh? Huh?
No, I thought you said.
No, I was just saying, we needed that letter for the case. I just put in there that he gave me. Of course, he did it for us.
Yeah, I say it, I say it as my concern. For, for construction purposes, it's really, it's necessary there, right?
Well, in order to have hetero, yes.
Yeah.
So without that, you really, there's not much of a project.
Yeah.
Those are the pots, the pots back.
Yeah, we're simply raising that, yeah, putting that.
That piece up there.
Head, right, down on that side.
To connect it to the existing.
Yes, exactly. So, so this will still be a pitched roof, same as that, with no dormers on, on the side facing the, the butter. And the west side facing downtown will have shed dorm. This is that.
Okay. Like the structural ability and connectivity, I'd have to go on.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess it's the wall. Yes, the next time, I think we're good. Mr. Hemmle?
The roof is heading downward, but I don't see it makes any really difference on the sightline.
I understand what you're saying. There's a piece in the corner when it, when it comes up, and the dorm comes out that way, and you're behind him and you're looking. You're going to lose, there'll be a little section that you're going to lose.
Yeah, but without that, they wouldn't have much of a project. I think you're correct.
It's an assumption, right. And the connectivity.
Well, it connects to that with the dorm, right?
Outside of that, I think it's a nice project.
And the property should be fixed up.
Yeah.
Should be nice. Bryan, I guess, from David's side. Should we do a motion? Mr. Hemmle?
Oh, please.
Okay. Another motion, please?
In number Z eighteen dash two, Mr. and Mrs. Joseph Bondi, for a variance, renovating attic, and they have two shed dormers with decks on the premises of a ten woods with street. They motion to grant the variance. Just, I think he needs a special finding and variance because.
And that's what's on hand, that's what's in.
Thank you.
I know, I know what you're saying. He'll get written like that.
Special finding.
Second?
Second.
On a motion? CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, some more. Further on to tonight's agenda, case number Z eighteen. Oh, Jesus. Case number Z eighteen dash four. I got a letter here from March thirteenth. I never read it out. Can I see that?
What number you want? Sorry, I'm still checking.
Uh, case number four.
Just, for clarification, that's a special permit for variance, flood point and a finding?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah. There's a letter here to continue this to March thirteenth, eighteen, to Brian's, uh, we should, oh, Brian.
That's four.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Allison calling for a special permit, variance, flood point and finding, to reconstruct a non-conforming structure on the premises number one forty-nine Rockland Streets. They motion to continue the hearing until March thirteenth.
Second?
Second.
On a motion? CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, some more. Anyone here for one forty-nine Rockland? That'll be heard the thirteenth of March.
So will Mary go out to?
No. Oh, you're going to re-advertise, that's right. It will, it will. They're going to re-advertise this.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that's, that's what happened. I wrote it down there, and I should have told you at the beginning, it was me and I followed up. I looked at the date when I was taking that next to last case myself. So it will be re-advertised only because it was a mistaken date. One went out one way, and one came out another way. So instead of that, we can just put it off on March, but re-advertise it twice again. All right? Okay. Thank you. Case number Z eighteen dash three, Jesse Snell, for a variance, reconfiguring, paving on the premises number two oh one Billings Road. He has kind of a representative here.
Sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Name and address to the board.
Jesse Snell, two oh one Billings Street, Quincy, Mass.
And what do you want to do?
So I'm basically looking to reconfigure the driveway. I included photos in the package, so as you can see, my front yard is asphalt. It looks hideous. I know we're big into aesthetics and whatnot. So what I'm looking to do is, I spoke about my neighbor, Manny, who's here behind me. We basically, you know, originally I wanted to buy him a driveway and put an asphalt tandem driveway on the side of my property. He wasn't on board with that. So we had a gentleman's agreement discussing permeable pavers that I could put on the side of the house. So I would basically run a tandem driveway with permeable pavers, so that way there'd be no runoff issue. He wants to maintain his driveway and keep it as is. So the permeable pavers would, basically all I'm looking to do is go to the property line, and then the pave, the pavers themselves would take all the rainwater, so there would be no runoff going into his property. The.
All right, you got one second here. Can you come in and show me, tell me what you got there? Where's your property line? Is it right here?
No, it actually comes in from like the corner of the house there. It's about ten feet, and it kind of fans out. I have.
No, I got the property. I'm just wondering where the pitch it really is compared to this. This, this is.
Right, so this is, this is off Google Maps, and there's a lot of change. I've, I've taken all these trees down. I did it all myself.
I know, I'm looking for the property line. Where is your property?
He has about three feet from his driveway that comes over. So I would say if it gets fatter, you hit the street, and then it narrows in.
Yeah, I saw the property, and I just wanted to make sure.
Right, so I'm, right, based on the scale, sir. I mean, all I know is from the front corner and the back corner, and it's about ten feet, the, the whole, the whole way.
Who's doing the work?
So it would be, oh, I think Rory, I, I forget his last name. Sorry, it is a licensed man, he's saying. He just flashed my whole foundation over the winter. He works local in town. He does a lot of historical, historical work, and he's a very reputable contractor. So the permeable pavers is actually smaller. The, the proposal that I have in place is smaller than what's in place right now currently. And it can still fit four, four vehicles. And the city would also gain two off-street parking spots. Because the aprons, in terms of where they are now, I would put granite curving, and that would allow to, to maybe, maybe even more. I mean, because the way how my other neighbor.
People did this all over the city. It's sad.
Right, I mean, you, you know, I mean, the last time I was here, you know, was for the addition. I'm, you know, I'm, I'm building the addition, and, you know, fences are going up, the house is going to be painted, you know, it's, it's going to look really nice, you know? I mean, there's not many residents that can come into the city and inject the amount of cash that I have injected into my property, and not only to improve the, the local community, but to improve the city itself. I've also spoken with Congressman Harris today. I told him what, what my plan was, and it seemed like he, he endorsed the plan for whatever that's on the side.
Very good. Any question?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If anyone wants to speak in favor. First call, come on up.
Manny Almeida, I own the property next to Jesse at two oh five Billings Street. My only concern was, and I think Jesse's addressed it, my concern is I, I plan on owning only the property that's there for a very long time. My kids will get it, so they can do what they want with it. So we just, we were just talking, and my concern was that when people start parking on that driveway, they're obviously going to start parking over on the grass, and then wouldn't have issues. Not only with the tents that are there, me coming up as well. So we discussed it, and he said he was on board with it, of putting a raised edge along that, so that does not happen.
The property.
Yes. So if that's, I'm perfectly fine with it. Jesse's done a great job with, with the property. And, you know, if he said that, that's what he's going to do, I, I believe him, and I would support the project.
The kids are going to sell the house to you.
I hope not. I really hope not.
Oh, you did.
We sacrifice, they take.
That's exactly right. They're in Aruba. We're dead. Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Second call? Third call? All are filed here and closed. I've got a letter here from the D P W, we review the public project and have no comments. Anyone opposed or run the side? Opposed or run the side, first call, second call, third call, closed. Yeah. Why don't you put the firm down? It's next.
Yeah, yeah, me too. It's, it would be like a Belgium block, so.
Yeah.
Stay, stay consistent with the theme.
Takes all along. Next. Anyone else? Comments?
No, I'm good.
On a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Three.
Three. Jesse Snell, for a variance, reconfiguring, paving on the premises number two oh one Billings Street, Quincy, and make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
On a motion? CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, some more. Mr. Chairman, I'm looking to adjourn. Executive session?
Executive session.
That's seconded?
Thank you. Second.
Oh, yeah, we're closing, we're going to executive session. So, she wants to, so, she wants to.
Yeah, we're not the first.
So there's a motion now to, to quote the open session, go into executive sessions. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to take a roll call. She just took a roll call here. So, and then I go to it here. Yeah, let me just read this in, though. I got to, I got to put this announcement. The purpose is to discuss the ongoing litigation of Norman Place versus the city of Quincy, presently before the housing appeals to me. Oh, you did.
We sacrifice, they take.
That's exactly right. They're in a rub, yeah, that's what we did. Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Second call, third call, all the party hearing closed, I got a letter here from the DPW, we review the progress and have no comments. Anyone opposed, you're undecided. Opposed, you're undecided, first call, second call, third call, close. Uh, yeah, why don't you put the firm there? It's nice.
Uh, yeah, yeah, me too, it's, you know, at least, it would be like a Belgium block, so we stay, stay consistent with the theme.
Takes our walk, nice. Anyone else, comments?
Uh, no, of course.
On the motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, number Z eighteen dash four, oh no, sorry.
Three.
Three, Jesse Snell for a variance, we figured a paving on the premises number two oh one Billings Street, Quincy, I make a motion to grant the variance.
Second. On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, no more.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
Executive session?
Executive session.
That's seconded?
Thank you.
Second. Oh, yeah, we're closing, we're going to executive session.
She wants to, she wants to.
Get the last person.
Re-open.
So there's a motion now to quote the open session going to executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to take a roll call, she just took a roll call here. So, and I go to it here, yeah, let me just read this in, I gotta, I gotta put this announcement. The purpose is to discuss the ongoing litigation of Robin Place versus the City of Quincy, presently before the housing appeals to be. We will not reconvene in open session tonight, take a roll call vote for the body. Oh, Cabeas?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
To Chen?
Yes.
To Hamel?
Yes.
Thank you, all right. Mr., where is he, Ray Dell? Did he come back too? No? Mr. Finkel? Franklin? Yes, yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to be going into executive session and this private matter, we're going to, we need you to clear the room.